All right. Check one, two, test, test. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of the city staff and the administration of this zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines. They have been appointed to the board by the city council. The board members are volunteers, and they receive no compensation for their public service. I'll introduce our board members on the audience, from the audience's right. Tom DeCio. Next to him is Dave Gare. Next to him is Rhonda Sidillo. On the audience's far left, Heather Ann Rowe. Then Justin Gross. And next to him is Marlis Jones. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. And to my left is the zoning board's legal counsel, Erie Guidelock. I'm going to take a moment here to introduce our city staff, who will be assisting today with the hearing. That includes Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner; Bert Dross, the deputy planning administrator; Chris Heilskove, the zoning enforcement officer; and Eric Lundie, the deputy director of neighborhood services. Our meeting moderator, down here in front, by all the gizmos, is Tyler Hall. I'll take a moment here to cover the meeting's procedure. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of the board. You may hope it's your only time. But we'll help you through the hearing, so don't worry about the procedural part. We'll guide you through that. But we'll give you a background here on how it works. First and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. This meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. If you don't have a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations, we've got them by the entrance door here, the little black trays. So when I'm done with my opening comments, feel free to step up and grab one of those if you need it. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first portion of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. In fact, they'll be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendations in the staff report, unless the appellant has not agreed to the conditions recommended, or if there's an individual in this audience or a member of this board that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda, so that a full discussion on the matter can occur before a decision is made. So I'll come back to this in just a few minutes here with how the consent agenda works. For the regular portion of the agenda, after an item has been announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing. Anyone wanting to speak in support of, in opposition to, or in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken on the agenda item, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And finally, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments, if they so choose. All speakers must speak only from the podium here at the center of the room. There's a microphone there by that screen. You must first begin your presentation by giving both your name and address of business or residence, as appropriate. In the event, you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item. The board will then immediately deliberate the request, and we will make a decision here today regarding the appeal. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we would ask that you wait until at least one week from today's hearing if you would need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order that will be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa district court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation will be considered as part of the permanent record. So if you plan to present any drawings, photos, or documents that you haven't already provided to city staff, you'll need to provide appropriate copies of those. And you may contact city staff after the hearing if you'd like a copy of anything presented. Finally, some quick housekeeping items. We'd ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience, so as to limit distractions during the hearing. Good job so far. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Also, good job so far. And if you need to use the restroom, you can just leave through the doors here. Walk past the stairs. You don't have to go back downstairs. Restrooms are just past the staircase on the left. Once the agenda item you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. And we'll have a five-minute break in the hearing around 3:00 or so, if we might need that. So that's basically our kind of procedural format. So what I'll do now is ask Frank to come up, and we'll just kind of make a quick review here if we have any changes to the agenda.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Currently, there are no changes for today's agenda. So we have four items that are on consent and two which are to be discussed.
Okay. And Frank, item two was withdrawn by the applicant, right?
That is correct.
So if anybody's got a copy of that?
Yep. Item two was withdrawn by the applicant. The applicant has chosen to meet all requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Cool. Yeah, because we had continued that from last month. Was that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay, so that'll leave items one, three, and four on our consent agenda. So as I said, I'll go over that again briefly. The request for the zoning exceptions and conditional uses that the applicants have provided on items one, three, and four, city staff believes that with some reasonable conditions, they've recommended approval of those. So unless there's somebody here in the audience or the appellant themselves that would not agree to the conditions, it's the staff's recommendation that we approve those first three items without an open hearing. So I'm going to read through them just briefly. Item one is a variance and zoning exception request at 2510 Ingersoll. Is there anybody here that would be opposed to the board granting the requested variances and exceptions? If you'd be opposed to that, just raise your hand for the moment. Seeing none. Item three is a conditional use request at 4545 Fluor Drive. Would there be anybody opposed to granting the requested conditional use there? That's related to selling wine and beer, I think related to a movie theater and cafe operation. Anybody opposed to that? Seeing none. Item four, a conditional use request related to some industrial expansion in the vicinity of 2100 Maori Avenue. Is there anybody here that would be opposed to us granting the requested conditional use there? Seeing none. Board members, if there's any concerns or questions on that, so speak. If not, would there be a motion to grant the request in conditional uses and variances on items one, three, and four? All right, motion by Marlis. Second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, that's, all seven are aye. No opposed. So if you were here for items one, three, or four, those have been approved with relevant conditions. You'll get a copy of that decision and order by about this time next week. Thank you for coming in. And we'll move to our regular portion of the hearing. We'll start with item number five. That's a conditional use request at 3826 Douglas Avenue. And Bert will kick us off with a summary of that request.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Dross, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. Item number five is a request for a conditional use that would allow for a limited sales, a limited retail sales use to sell alcoholic liquor, wine, and/or beer. And limited retail sales is just another word for grocery store. So the subject property is the Douglas Avenue Plaza at the southwest corner of Douglas Avenue and 38th Street. The tenant bay is an 800-square-foot space. It's currently occupied by E-Nation Grocery Store. I have some photos of the site. The first two are actually of the backside of the building. You can see there's a parking lot on the south side to the rear. And then this is the front facade. So on the left here is Douglas Avenue. This is looking east across the site. And the 800 tenant bay is located in the middle of the building. And this is looking at it from the other angle. This is the layout they provided. North is at the bottom, so the entrance faces Douglas Avenue. And then it would be an 800-square-foot tenant bay. And I believe their alcohol would be placed in these coolers on the west and south walls. In our staff report, we, I guess, make note that, given the proximity of these houses immediately to the east, I'm sorry, to the west and to the south, we didn't feel that this is an appropriate location for liquor sales. We felt beer and wine sales would be appropriate here, but we didn't believe that adding alcoholic liquor to the mix would be appropriate. So we've recommended denial of the request as proposed, but approval of a revised conditional use that would allow for the sale of beer and wine only. And we had recommended 13 conditions. I won't read through them, but the standard conditions, such as limiting the sale of wine, beer, and tobacco products to no more than 40% of overhaul sales. And then we've also recommended that the hours be limited to 9:00 a.m. to, I'm sorry, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday; 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturdays; and then 11:00 to 6:00 on Sundays. And that is what the applicant proposed. I'll go through the comment cards. We did get several in opposition, and then a few in support. I guess first, this was the applicant's summary of their neighborhood outreach. I'll just point out that they do, in the summary, they say that all of these people were okay. But as you'll see, about six of them are actually, have submitted cards in opposition. So it kind of conflicts with what the applicant was saying. But just go through these cards quickly. Couple in support. And the second, zoom out. So we had one from 37 to 138th Street in opposition. Another one in opposition. And two more in support. And then I believe this is the last one. And here's the consent map that shows the proximity of those property owners. So again, staff's recommended denial of the request as proposed, which would include liquor sales, but approval of a revised appeal that would allow beer and wine sales only. So any questions for me?
Questions for Bert from the board? Justin?
Bert, is there, in the vicinity, is there any other places that are selling beer, wine, alcohol?
No, they meant the separation distance. So liquor sales would require a quarter-mile separation from another comparable use selling liquor. There aren't any within a quarter mile.
Okay. So the biggest concern of the city is just that there's neighborhood contact there?
Right. Yeah, the proximity of these single-family houses.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Bert?
I have a question.
Yes.
This is a new business moving in, correct?
It is. There was a previous grocery store in there, I think it was Kane &amp; African Groceries. They had sold wine and beer, but they were vacant for more than six months. So they lost, the conditional use expired. So now this is a new business that I believe they're already operating. I'll let the applicant explain, but I believe they're operating and they're just needing to add the alcohol sales to make their business work.
And Bert, just a couple of brief questions here. And you had mentioned that a previous operator did have a conditional use here to sell beer and wine, but not alcoholic liquor, correct?
Right.
And do you generally know how long ago that had been granted? It was many years ago, right?
I don't remember offhand, right.
Okay. To the best of your knowledge, had there been any problems?
Not that I know of, Eric, do you know?
Okay. And while operators might be different when we approve these conditional uses, we're approving them for the, in essence, the property, not a specific operator, correct?
That's correct, yeah. The conditional use would go with the land.
Right. And when we did make that, or with this proposal here in front of us, staff is only recommending the beer and wine. So if the board would vote to, you know, concur with your recommendations, and if we denied the alcoholic liquor, potentially, how long would they have to wait then to come back to the board and say, gee, can you consider us for liquor now?
Right. I would defer to Gary, but I believe since it's not a denial, they would be able to, there's no time limit. Like, if the board flat-out denied it, then there would be that one-year time period.
That's kind of what I'm getting at.
If you approve it, it's technically not a denial.
Okay. All right. If we just approve the beer and wine, but don't approve the alcoholic liquor, that's not a denial?
Right.
Okay. Okay. That's interesting. Okay.
But then if they would come back, say, in six months, ask for liquor, and the board denies that, then...
They have to wait at least a year?
They would have to wait a year, yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you, Bert. So the way this hearing works is now the applicant or their representative has up to 10 minutes to step forward and address the board with the reasoning for their conditional use request. So is there anybody here from the owner or the applicant? Good afternoon, sir. Yeah, just step up to the microphone. We first need your name and your address, and then you've got up to 10 minutes to tell us about your request.
Sure. My name is Eric DeSaba. My business address is 3826 Douglas Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, 50310. And I'm the owner of the business. I don't have anybody work there, but I'm the only one who work there as owner. And as I said, so I don't have any employee there. And then, so I requested to be able to be served, because I've been there for almost five years with my grocery store. And then, so I just, I was just trying to see if I can be able to be selling alcohol, beer and wine and liquor. Yes.
So Derek, you mentioned five years. Did you work there under the other owners? Or did I not understand correctly?
It's only me and my wife.
Just you and your wife. Have you operated other grocery stores or alcoholic sales stores in Des Moines?
No.
Okay. Or were in Iowa or anything?
No.
No. Okay. All right. So this is a new entrepreneur thing for you, huh?
Yes, sir.
Cool. Okay. Staff is recommending, you know, just beer and wine, but regardless of the type of alcohol, staff is recommending limited sales, or some limitations on the hours of operation for those sales? If you've read the city staff recommendation, are those the hours you'd propose to be open? Or do you see the hours you'd like to have being different from what the city's suggested?
Yes, sir. The all hours would be the same.
Is the same?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have anything they'd like to ask Derek? Justin?
Hello, how are you?
Good, sir.
So you've been working with your wife for a couple of years, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And you want to sell liquor with the beer and wine, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And it sounds like the city is kind of concerned about the selling of liquor.
Okay.
Do you have clients that come in and ask specifically for liquor in your place?
Some customers just come in, come to my store and ask, are you selling liquor? Are you selling beer? Are you selling wine? Say, no, I don't sell anything right here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So you do, it sounds like you do have people asking for beer, wine, sometimes liquor, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Okay. Anybody here to speak in support of the applicant's request? That's the next order of operation here. Anybody who would like to speak in support of the applicant's request? Just step forward. You'd have up to five minutes. Seeing none. Is there anybody who would be opposed to granting the requested conditional use for the selling of alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer? Anybody opposed? If you're opposed, please step forward. You'd have up to five minutes to address the board. Okay? Don't see anybody. Even in neutrality, if it's something related to the case, maybe you're not pro or con. Any thoughts? Seeing none. Do we have any further questions for staff? Okay. Anything? Eric, anything? You or Chris?
... on that other, the other use that was there does not seem to affect any bay?
Okay.
Yes.
It was in 3818.
Why don't you just hop up quick, so we hear it on the microphone? I think that's good clarification. There's a number of bays here, or tenant suites. And Eric's just going to clarify where the previous conditional use was located on the property. Which bay?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Lundie, deputy director, neighborhood services. So the question was raised about the previous conditional use. The board took up a similar type of request for beer and wine only in 2016, September of 2016. So it doesn't seem that long ago, but it's been seven years. So at that time, they did grant that for beer and wine within the 1,800-square-feet space at 3818. So it would have been a little further to the left, I guess. I don't know if it's easy.
The west?
I don't know how hard it is.
As you face it, yeah. Gotcha.
Zoom in on that. Frank, are you doing it? Am I doing that? I somehow closed maps, so...
Oh, man, look at all that.
Get to see it live.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What's your password there?
You know what? I have to look it up every time. By the way, this functionality is actually on the city's website, if you want to go through.
So citizens can use this without any special accounts or anything?
Yeah. Now, they may not, there's some layers that they may not have access to, but they have a lot of this information, including the zoning districts. It looks like there's a tenant bay a little bit further to the east that's identified as 3818.
So as a reminder, where the applicant is operating and where the other conditional use was, can you?
Yeah, so this is the one that's in question here, just to the west.
Okay.
I could maybe do Google Maps to see what it looks like on the facade, but they're in close proximity.
Right. Gotcha. Okay. And as far as notifications, Eric, since you're up here, I'm sure you can help us with this. The property owner is the one that gets a card, not necessarily the operators of tenant bays, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So in this case, the NAP interest would have gotten it.
All right, yeah. So commercial renters.
They probably would have gotten three cards.
Because there's three related parts.
Because they have three separate parcels here that were, one that would have been the subject, and two that would have been within that proximity.
But the other business tenants don't receive a specific notification about this, then?
Not unless the owner decides to do that, yeah.
Sure. Gotcha.
We don't require that.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate the extra relevance there. As a courtesy, Derek, is there anything else you want to say before we go to our board discussion? Think you got it covered?
I don't think so.
Or Derek? Derek? Yeah. Are you good for now? Okay. All right.
Can I have a clarification on something?
Yeah, sure, sure.
The bay is 800 square feet, is that right? So it's a fairly small area.
Yeah. Do we have that in the city staff report here?
I just wanted to double-check that.
Yeah. 800-square-foot tenant space, that's accurate.
Can I ask you one more question to the applicant? I'm not sure if it's in here or not. What else do you sell?
Food. African foods.
Fresh produce? Packaged foods?
No, I don't sell that.
Okay.
Do you sell, like, bananas, tomatoes?
No, I don't sell banana and tomato.
No. Okay.
So convenience foods?
No, just seafood, like, the food from Africa, East Africa, Western stuff, and some, North America and South America, something like that. Mexico, so...
So very specialized cuisine or ethnic foods? No Wonder Bread or peanut butter?
No.
Boring Iowa things?
No, no, that.
All right. Okay.
So is it a restaurant, or is it a grocery store?
It's a grocery store.
Okay.
So you would consider yourself a specialized grocery store? It's more niche, right? It's not a convenience store?
It's a small, small store, but, so, I ask my landlord, how many feet is it? So that's will give me the 800 feet for my own rooms. Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, sir. You can go ahead and sit down. We'll close the public portion and go to board deliberations. So now it's our time to talk with each other. Anybody have any initial thoughts? And then thereafter, any proposals? Justin?
I mean, I think we can handle this one of two ways, right? I mean, one would be to give him the conditional use just for the beer and wine, right? And see how he does. And then if things are going well in the future, come back and ask for the alcohol. Or we give him all of it now, and there are the, you know, the safety nets there for if things are going wrong, and enforcement will come and bring it back to this board. So I don't know which one to go right now, but I just think that's, you know, let's frame it with those two options in mind and continue the discussion.
Those are, those are good comparisons for both. Heather Ann?
My thoughts would be, since we found out that the tenants sharing the space with this business didn't, we don't know for sure if they exactly were able to give their opinions. And things like this do affect neighboring businesses a lot. It could create a nuisance for them. That I would be more amenable to doing the first that Justin suggested. for them. That I would be more amenable to doing the first that Justin suggested than the whole kit and caboodle at this time.
Sure. Any thoughts on this side of the counter? Give them everything.
I was thinking the same thing, just give them everything upfront to see how it goes, and then, I mean, I would.
That's some good discussion.
Yeah.
I kind of might throw in on this too a little. Certainly, we make our decisions with cases today, the board that's here today, but I was on this board when we made our original determination. I'm thinking the applicant was probably just as nice and had just as a nifty plan, but I think the board at the time felt that with the density of the property, a number of other tenants, as well as that this is neighboring, you know, residential area on the same side of the street, that in consideration of, you know, neighborhood character, that, mm, selling hard booze out of the joint probably didn't feel like something that we were comfortable with. And apparently, they operated for some time that way. I'd kind of be more inclined to say, let's have a lower impact for alcohol sales here, not necessarily the hard stuff. It's obvious he specializes in, you know, African ethnic grocery cuisine stuff. Maybe once in a while, somebody might want some Crown Royal, but it doesn't sound like that's his big part of the business model. I would prefer, let's walk before we run and see how it goes, but that's just me. That's just me. So I don't have a proposal, but those are just my thoughts.
Dave?
I think if he's, I think if he's going to have a problem, it's going to be whether it's beer, wine, or liquor, it's a problem, period. People can get drunk drinking beer, just like they can liquor.
Yeah, they can.
So I, I think for us to try and think that we're going to avoid a problem here by allowing no liquor, but beer and wine's okay?
Okay.
I don't, I don't see that as being a big deal. Let's give this guy a chance.
Well, does anybody want to make an actual proposal, then? I know that Justin kind of laid out the two, but pick one.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, sure, go for it, Dave.
For, let's give him beer, wine, and liquor. And if, if there's a problem, it's going to come back.
And then along with that, for clarification?
We can go with all the.
With the remaining staff recommendations, but allowing the sale of alcoholic liquor under one.
Absolutely.
So, so you'd be scratching one?
Yep.
Would there be a second? All right. So motion by Dave and a second by Rhonda to grant the requested conditional use for limited retail sales selling alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer in the RX-1 district, subject to the remaining staff conditions of items 2 through 13, which I believe are appropriate. Is that clear enough for staff? Okay, all right. So all those in favor of granting that requested conditional use, including selling of the alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Three. So, this is a good lesson in zoning board of adjustment hearings. It takes four to pass, so the vote passes four to three. So Derek, you get to sell Crown Royal if you would like to. So, you've been approved to sell your alcoholic liquor, wine, and beer. That must still be limited to less, less than 40% of your sales. Staff will give you a copy of that decision by about this time next week, and we wish you well with your business. All right, thank you for coming in today. All right, so that'll move us on then to item number six. That is a request to amend an existing conditional use at 821 East Euclid Avenue, and Frank is going to give us the background on this one.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Item six is located at 821 East Euclid Avenue, and the applicant currently has a conditional use that was originally granted in 2019 and then amended in 2020. The size of the store grew during that time. The applicant is here in front of us today simply to look at the hours of operation as part of the granting of the last conditional use. They had a number of conditions, one of which required them to close at 11:00 PM. So they're in front of us today. They would like to close at midnight instead of 11:00 PM. Just to give some context of the site, it's located right here at the southwest corner of East Euclid and Wright Street. It is directly across the street from Get and Go on the northwest corner. The property is, there is a number of residential homes to the west and to the south, also across the street, caty corner. Just to give some layout of the site, so here's a image directly from the north facing the front facade. As you'll see, there is no entrance along East Euclid. You'd have to pull onto Wright, Wright Street to actually enter the business. And here is another image. This image is facing west across the property. And so typical for a conditional use are typical standards for, requirements for a business selling alcohol, liquor, wine, and beer. And so as part of their request to amend the hours of operation, staff looked at the request and determined that, determined that there wasn't a particular, there wasn't anything we could identify that changed the circumstance for which the Board of Adjustment had granted the conditional use with the restriction in the hours of operation. And so staff has recommended denial of the request. As part of the mailing notifications that went out, we did have a number of responses, however, within 250 feet. Here's the card, as you'll see, to the north there, that's in opposition. And I'll zoom in on this a touch. And this is from the Highland Park Neighborhood Association. They received a few that were emailed in. And so a few of the folks noting the increase in hours of operation would lead to different types of disturbances from music, loud exhaust, et cetera, as well as some of the concerns associated with trash. I will ask, the applicant did submit a few comments, so I'm going to go ahead and turn on the overhead and present those as well.
Yeah, this looks pretty fancy.
And I would like to note that, as I looked up the addresses for these, these are just outside of that 250-foot range. This one is in Spanish.
And my ignorance here, I'm still working on my first language. Can you, can somebody maybe summarize what this says? Okay.
Yeah, and as staff, I would appreciate the applicant addressing that just because of interpretation purposes, so.
Yeah, so we can come back to that one.
There, we did request some police reports, so I'll scan through those. So the, the police reports were for the last eight months?
And generally speaking, the police report means this address is what the police used for either they responded to that address, or it's the nearest address to whatever the incident was, right?
That is correct, and so the, the police call noting the closest proximity.
Okay. So those are just breakdowns of the overall totals that we had, what, less than a dozen or so, the last eight months?
That'd be correct.
Okay.
And that is it.
Okay.
What questions do you have for staff?
Anyone from the board? Justin?
Frank, you mentioned the phrase material change, and that's, is that sort of the reason why you're, what the city's position is to decline, is because of that material change? And is that required? Is that required to have an amendment?
I, I believe what we are looking for is something that tells us the situation, the circumstances are different for amending some of the conditions. That is typical when we're doing this type of an examination. We weren't able to identify anything that was clearly different. It has been since 2021 that they have been open, and so there's a duration of time there, but we didn't see anything that would tell us the situation is different.
I just know that there was some discussion in the previous, and I'm not trying to compare the two, but the previous one was talking about, well, it wasn't denied, so therefore they could come back later to amend.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and that's sort of similar to what's going on here, is that right?
That is correct, and so that's, that's why really we're looking at the one condition. All the other conditions that exist on the site would remain in play.
Thank you.
And Frank, just to clarify, you know, and again, each, each item is its own unique thing, but like this last one, it was just a grocery store where up to 40% could be alcoholic liquor, wine, et cetera. In this one, it was approved as a liquor store. Up to 100% of the sales can be alcohol, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so there's no real discussion about what they're selling here, it's just that extending the hours of operation, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions for Frank? Okay, we can always check back with staff later. Thank you, Frank. Okay, this is the applicant's time. They have up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for their amendment request.
Lloyd Ogle, representing the applicant, 301 East Walnut Street, Des Moines, Chairman, members of the board. So, the, the original, I would just like to point out, this is a new construction. This site was completely redone. The total investment, I believe, including acquisition, was almost $1.8 million. And the difference, what's materially different is that now we've had a track record. Before, we were coming in, while we do have an experienced owner, we'd not had a previous business at the site. So, and this is a site that, again, it was a different building, but I think it had some checkered issues. And so, at this point in time, they've been in operation for over a year, and they believe that they've, they've proved themselves. They've not had, they're not aware of any police calls for any incidents related in the store or in the parking lot. They are aware that there are a lot of complaints about the get and go across the street, but they believe they're a good actor. We do have several members of the, some residents in the, in the area that I think are here to speak today and support, as well as those letters. And we do have one gentleman who's also a resident who will read the two letters that are in Spanish for all of our benefit. And there, is there anything you want to?
Hello, Indra Dillon, 100 East Euclid, Des Moines. Kind of just give you a background on the project. 2019, I purchased the building. It was an old fuel station that was just kind of run down. We, we worked with the city, we built a new building. We came in front of the board in 19 and 2020 to amend that CUP that I obtained from you guys. Last year, we did open up in August, and we've had actually great success at that location. As we were getting into the winter season, the holiday season last year, and even spring and summer this year, customers been kind of asking our team to say, hey, you know, rest of the liquor stores are open until 2:00, you guys are only open until 11:00. We kind of just told them, hey, you know, some conditions were set, agreements were reached. When we got the CUP, we kind of have to abide by it. But as they kept telling us, we started looking at it, maybe, hey, maybe 1:00, maybe 2:00. We kind of agreed to an agreement to maybe bring this request to you guys for midnight, only because of 1:00 and 2:00, I think everyone's kind of, there's barely a car or two on the road in Euclid at that time. So, we worked with our neighbors. We did hold a neighborhood meet at the location. No one came, but we did get a couple of letters in support, which we have brought those in, and we also brought a couple of the neighbors along with us. A few we tried to bring, but their schedules were not lining up for today's meeting. So, yeah, we're just kind of here just to see if you guys can take another look at it. If midnight work, our store's clean, you can see from Google Photos, it's a brand-new building. We keep it clean inside and out. We work with the city of Des Moines. Calls are very limited. Some of those calls are, but they're not really our location. Sometimes there's, there's an intersection that always has wrecks there, so they do come onto our property. So, yeah, so that's kind of where we're at right now, and thanks for taking the time to look at it.
And, and Indra, since you're up here, if I remember right, this was a, this was a former gas station, it was a Valero station back in the day, is that right?
Yep, oh, Valero, yep.
Okay, yeah, East Siders, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so canopy gone, tanks and pumps were dug out years ago, and, yeah, it does look very nice. You've done a nice job transforming that. Yeah, you'd never know. Okay, any questions for the applicant or his attorney?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Do you have any comment about the items that said that there was trash being thrown into other people's yards?
We keep it, we clean up all the time. It's twice a day. I don't know, every time I drive past, it's very clean. Maybe once or twice, sometimes there is stuff that's left on the yard, we have to go pick it up, but no, I mean, I think it's, it's clean. But we can address it. I mean, if that needs to be, say, hey, we're doing it twice, twice a day, we can go out there and three times a day and take care of the, the yard and the lawn. Oh, okay, was the question about if trash is on the neighbor's property? I mean, if it's, I think the only one we have is just a house that is now vacant behind us, because we are on a corner. The only house we have is just behind us, but yes, I mean, we can, we will take care of that if that's needed. But I believe that, that duplex is now empty.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, anything else? Heather Ann?
Do you have trash receptacles on the property?
Yes, we do.
How many?
Two. Yep, we have two, and then the garbage enclosure.
And that's usually a standard requirement, kind of on those dozen things, they got to have trash and litter receptacles, keep the property lighted, no loitering. There's usually a number of general conditions. Anything else? Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll check back with you in a few minutes here. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? If so, please step forward. Good afternoon, we just need your name, address. You've got up to five minutes to present any comments.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandon Lennaris Nunez. I live on 3408 Wright Street, on the same block as the liquor store. I came in support of them at same because usually every week, you know, I hang out with some buddies, and it would be convenient to have the store open until 12:00. I understand the, till 2:00 o'clock sometimes, yeah, you never know how businesses go, but recently everything's been going good. I like the new look to the community, it looks good to me, and I was just hearing about the concerns and the trash problems. Usually, yeah, there is, but as long as I've been there, I've been there for over 20 years, it always has been a trash problem. And I think it's more up to us as a community to just be like, hey, you know, pick it up. And I take initiative on that. But yeah, I just came here to show my support for the store, and I would like to see it open to 12:00, and definitely from there, see where it goes.
Okay. All right, thanks, Brandon.
Oh, yeah, I also came to translate these letters.
Oh, yes, yes, please do.
I don't know how to, I'm not much text average.
Should I just press a power button? There, yep, yep, we, we can see it, yeah.
Hola, por este medio les quiero decir que la tienda licor me queda muy cerca de mi casa. Hi, by this means, I would like to say that the liquor store stays close to my house. Aparte, hay muchas cosas que comprar, ahí vende mayor, y yo siempre voy para comprar papas, gomitas, dulces, y cosas más. Apart from this, there's many things to buy there, they have a majority of choices. I would go to buy chips, gummies, and candies, and other things. Aparte, venden licor, bebidas alcohólicas, venden muchas aguas, bebés, jugos, y etc. Apart from selling liquor and alcoholic drinks, they sell multiple drinks, flavors, and juices, etc. Y lo tenemos cerca en las noches, nos gusta porque hay muchas luces. And they, we have it close to us at night, and we like to go because of all the lights. Para caminar de noche, yo como, como trabajo en la noche, a veces quiero comprar hielo y no puedo porque está cerrada, y a las 12:00 es una hora para cerrar. We like to go because I work late at night, and sometimes I like to go buy ice, and I can't because it's closed. We would like to open until 12:00 a.m., it's a better time to close. Name and address, 26 September 2023, 715 East Euclid Avenue. And the other is right here, 715 East Euclid Avenue. Vivo cerca de la licoría, me queda más cerca y más segura de ir al Get and Go. I live close to the liquor store, and I like to go because it's closer and more secure to going to Get and Go. Me gustaría verlos abiertos hasta las 12 de la mañana porque me comienzan más, y nosotros preferimos ir a esta ciudad. I would like to see it open until 12:00 in the morning because it's more convenient, and we prefer to go to this place. No solo venden alcohol, también venden aguas y cosas necesarias. Not only do they sell alcohol, but they sell other drinks and other necessary items. Obita González, 926, 2023.
Okay, thank you for your translation on those, as well as your own comments. Much appreciated, Brandon.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wants to speak in support? Come on up. And again, we just need your name, address, you've got up to five minutes.
Good afternoon, my name is David Ratliff, 3913 East 8th Street in Des Moines, Iowa. I live about four blocks or so from the store. Because many times at night, I have, I've been forced to have to go to Get and Go to get milk or bread or something, and pay twice the amount that Superfluous charges. The place is always clean, it's, they keep it spotless. And they really work with their customers, too. And, yeah, the, I don't know what else to say, it's other than, you know, I am in support, and so is my family for this. Because a lot of times, you know, after 11:00, you have Walgreens about a quarter mile up the road, or Get and Go across the street, and it's twice as much. So, thank you for your listening to me.
And David, since, since you're here, I'm just curious, you mentioned Get and Go a number of times, do you generally know what their hours of operation are?
They're open until midnight.
They're open until midnight?
Yeah. It's kind of unfair, but...
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else to speak in support? Seeing none, is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the applicant's request for the extended hours? Anybody to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, anybody to speak in neutrality, just related issues to the item at hand? Seeing none. Do we have any further questions for staff? Doesn't look like we need any clarification. Eric, did you want to clarify something? All right, step on up.
Eric Lundey. This, I wanted to make the distinction, especially since we have a new member at least, but this does come up because I think the media tends to report this a little bit incorrectly. The board's role is to put limitations on the use of the land. In this case, they won't even require any modification to their license.
Right.
The license actually allows them hours that go beyond this. The board is not putting any type of restrictions or limitations on their license, but we are considering the limitation of the use of the land and the hours of operation that the business itself would be able to operate. So I think a lot of times, there's some confusion as to, you know, that you're just restricting the sale of liquor itself or something like that, so...
Right, sour of operation of the entire building.
Yes, which, milk, bread, whatever, yeah.
But in theory, or in fact, they do have the option, 100% of their sales could be booze if they want it to be, right?
By their, yes, by the way they were defined with their approval, yes.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to make sure there was that distinction, that, and that, that you know your action is really just the use of the land, not the licensing.
Got you, thank you. Okay, all right. As a courtesy, Mr. Ogilvy, you or your client, anything you want to say? Okay, all right, then we'll go ahead and close the public portion, go to board deliberation. Any thoughts among the members to start us off?
I'm in for approving it to go through midnight, just because I know the area, and I, I wouldn't want to go to Get and Go there either, if it was the same hours and I had a choice between that building and Get and Go.
But this is about this location, it's not about Get and Go.
No, exactly, but go drive further, I guess, what else is open? Walgreens?
Mm-hmm.
But this location is such a blessing, I think, to the community here, that is, I would, I would like to see it open until 12:00.
Okay, good to know. Others? Heather Ann?
I am not familiar, I'm still learning my way around the city, even though I've been here enough years, I should know more. So the comment card that I, that caught my eye about the, the noise, I really felt for that comment because I am a fellow late sleeper, and, you know, I can't keep blaming my children for that, but I, I can see how a business being loud could decrease the quality of life if you live close to a business that has, you know, loud cars coming up and, and whatnot, but the more I'm listening, the more I hear, there's no way to tell which business exactly it might be coming from. So that was my only comment about the situation.
I, I was thinking about that, too, as well, but it's on Euclid. Euclid is busy.
Busy streets, four-lane street.
Yes, yes. Four lanes, it's not a quiet street. I live on a side, not very far west of that. I hear loud motorcycle stuff going on at night, it's like, you're going to hear it no matter where you're at, I think. But when you're on Euclid, you're going to have that traffic and people coming through it, so I was thinking about that, too, but...
So you're saying it's a, it's a major corridor? Yeah, okay.
Chair, I, I would be in support of the amendment. I think they've invested heavily into this property. I think they're a good asset to the area. As discussed, you know, the noise is unavoidable, it is a huge thoroughfare. Cars are going up and down that street at all hours. And, you know, an additional hours is very reasonable, so I would be in support of the amendment, thank you.
Is that a motion?
I would, could turn it into a motion real quick, Dave.
I'll second it, okay.
Well, we see where he wants to go. I don't need to deliberate things any further. If somebody wants to make a motion, there may or may not be consensus, but we do, there is a motion, there is a second, which would be to grant the requested amendment to the conditional use to expand the hours from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., to 8:00 to midnight, yeah. So, so they'd be able to operate for an extra hour per day closing at midnight. So all the, those that would be in favor to amending the conditional use, raise your right hand, say aye. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed? All right, so, motion carries five to two, you can be open a little later. The business does look wonderful. I'd never know it was an old gas station, keep up the good work over there. Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a little other business here today at the board, I don't, we don't have any other hearing items, I think just two basic things. One is, I believe we have some students from Drake University with us, are these law school students? Cool. Well, as chair of this board, I'm going to make an executive decision, once this hearing is over. If any of the students would like to speak to any of the board members, or who would remain available, or any city staff that would remain available, if you'd like to ask us anything for the next few minutes, we'd be glad to speak with you. So, I know I certainly would, my wife's a journalism mass communication graduate at Drake, so anything I can do for Drake folks. Business, we have, I think we need to approve our schedule for the next calendar year of meetings. Do we have a way to pull that up, or do we really need to? I think it's the fourth Wednesday of the month, except for November, December, that'd be the third Wednesday, is that correct, Frank? All right.
That is correct, fourth Wednesday of the month, January through October, and then the third Wednesday, November, December.
All right, that's excellent, okay, so, would there be a motion to approve the proposed schedule of hearings for 2024? All right, motion by Rhonda, second by Marla, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries seven zero. Then minutes of the August meeting, if, what, Tom? Okay, Tom's with us, seven zero. Anybody who was here last month for the August 23rd meeting, staff has provided the minutes. Are there any changes to those, any corrections? If none, would there be a motion to approve? Marla's made the motion. She's second. All right, all is in favor, Tom? Aye. Dave wasn't here, I was here, so motion carries six zero, Dave Gare was absent. Okay, staff, any other business? Seeing none, this hearing is adjourned.